Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June fourteenth, twenty twenty one Planning Board Meeting. Please stand to pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, which stands in one nation, under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright, we're gonna start out first with the correspondence. Is there anything in there that we need to talk about, or anybody wants to discuss?
Can you need to talk, have a conversation about the mural on the Cable Vision Building?
Okay, I think we've all seen that at this point.
So.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, please.
Uh, the situation for you guys is, um, the the arbividee that are there along one eighteen is, you know, a site plan requirement to help screen the building because it's really the side of the building. And so the, the guy who wants to do it, who's, who's on, in fact, I see his, uh, icon there.
Hi, how you doing?
His name is Howard. He, he, uh, he wants to put up the mural, uh, but we would need to probably trim those arbividee down to some degree to make it optimally visible. Without taking, in my view, without taking too much of them down, so you don't see all the rest of the stuff you don't want to see, so. That's the issue, so.
Is there any law that says that arbividee have to be sorted? Why, why can't you just chop it down? Chop them a little bit off?
Well, it's, it's up to you guys, because you guys, it's on your, uh, your approved site plan, and it's there as a landscaping tool to help screen that side of the building.
Well, when they were planted, they weren't that high. They were planted at probably three, four feet, five feet.
Yeah, but, you know, they were expected to get mature than the three or four feet, so. Yeah.
I mean, I, I tell you, I'm for the mural. It looks, to me, it, it's, it's, it's good.
Okay.
Hey, John, cause a couple of quick questions. Um, I, I, I too applaud the community spirit and, and the images are great, and they're very representative of the town. Uh, however, there's also, um, a, a couple of logos there that suggests it's more of a sign than it is a mural. Is there anything in the signage, uh, laws or anything like that that would need to be addressed, or anything like that?
Uh, we didn't get that far with it yet, but yes, it, that, we thought of that. And we're going to have to look to see if it does qualify as a sign, and if so, then it will need to be reviewed under that, um, you know, that, uh, law. Um, so the answer to that is yes. Um, and e- even if that comes to pass, uh, we would have to be here and talk about, you know, the lowering of the, or the trimming of those trees, but yes, that is, that is our next step to look to see if it's gonna be, uh, considered a sign under, under the law.
Okay.
So.
Alright, so past the arbividees and the, um, looking at the code, is this something we just brought off the ARB?
Uh, the ARB or Abakas, I think, yeah, I, I think it should go to them, probably. Um, and if you, if you want, I can, I, I think for your purposes, this can probably be a, you know, a vote with a memo that's produced, since I think that the arbividees will remain and still do a screening job, albeit somewhat lower. Uh, so if you want us to, uh, investigate it and sort of come up with how much should be trimmed down, we can, we can do that as well. And just, uh.
That'll be helpful.
Yeah, sure, that's good.
Yeah, and then we can see.
Some direction, or give them direction.
Yeah, yeah, and so, uh, we'll send it over to Abaka and, uh, we'll, uh, investigate further, uh, trimming the trees down for you.
Terrific.
Something to plan.
Okay.
Alright, Mr. Payson? Welcome to, welcome to Yorktown.
You didn't hear it, Howard. He's walking around.
Yeah, alright.
Okay. Thanks, I appreciate it.
Thanks, John. Anything else in correspondence that we want to talk about?
Uh, just a quick question. I saw, uh, pictures from the sidewalk. Um, who, who took the pictures?
Me.
Oh, this weekend?
Yeah.
I heard of me.
Did Peter take the pictures from conservation? Which pictures?
Uh, there were the pictures showing the properties and so forth?
In correspondence.
Properties we went to, uh, Katie and the other farm?
No, no, no.
Right, but he's talking about correspondence. I took those pictures on Saturday.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll move to the, uh, meeting minutes of May twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. Has everybody had a chance to review them? Anybody have any issues?
No issues.
John, Jim, any issues?
Nothing from me.
We're fine, we have no issues.
Thank you. Then do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of May twenty fourth, twenty twenty one?
Motion.
Second.
First by La Scala, second by Biscotti. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, we're gonna move into the regular portion of our meeting. First on the agenda is the Stammer subdivision. This is a decision of a SWIP and tree permit. Location is six hundred Bird Soul Drive. Insight Engineering.
Aye, good evening.
Aye, aye, Rich.
Um, so just to give, uh, the board a brief overview, uh, we were before you on May twenty fourth. Um, we've submitted drawings for the current owner, Andrew Fiori, who's with us this evening. Um, he is essentially building the same site plan, um, that was approved as part of the subdivision, just with a different house footprint. Uh, in total, there's a tenth of an acre less of disturbance than proposed as part of the subdivision, and one hundredth of an acre increase in impervious surface. Um, we did value engineer, uh, the rainwater system, uh, system, um, moving to a different concrete product based on one that's available. Um, as we all know, through COVID, uh, materials and availability in materials is becoming a challenge. So we had to work with precasters that we could find. Um, but essentially, it's the same site plan, so we're before you now, just to perfect the, uh, stormwater entry removal permit. All that remained was for, uh, Mr. Ciarceya to concur with our SWIP, and that, uh, the changes were as minimal as we described.
Dan, you on?
I'm here. Uh, yeah, I mean, it's, it's essentially the same plan in terms of stormwater runoff. Um, it's, it's a very slight difference, you know, technically it's a difference, but really, it's not. Um, and Insight's done the, uh, the analysis to prove it out. Um, can't blame them for doing a little value engineering in this, uh, environment we're in, so, uh, we have no objections to the plan as proposed.
Thank you. John, any issues on your end?
No, we have no issues here.
Jim?
Nothing from me.
Any issues from members of the board? Okay, Rich, have you seen the resolution?
I have, and we don't have any comments or objections.
Okay, then, that being said, we have a resolution on page forty-five of our book. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution approving stormwater pollution prevention and tree permit for the Stammer subdivision lot one?
Motion.
Motion by La Scala, or first by La Scala. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Garrigan. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks for your help, Rich, very nice.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Great.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Wells Fargo Bank. This is a decision of, about a lighting plan. Location is one, three, four, two, East Main Street in Truville. Uh, if you remember, this is, there were two parts to this. The applicant has pulled one off as they are working with the Abaka Group to, uh, get it in a place they're happy with. Is the applicant on?
Hi, uh, my name is Alex. We're the lighting designers for GMR. Or, sorry, for Wells Fargo. Let me share my screen real quick. Um.
Where are you, Alex?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, can you see my screen?
Yep.
So, background about this project, Wells Fargo is doing a nationwide program trying to bring all of their exterior ATMs into compliance with state laws. Uh, each state has their own set of statutes and laws requiring a certain amount of light levels around an ATM during hours of darkness. So this design is specifically to bring the bank into compliance with those laws. So for this site, all we're doing is adding two wall fixtures on the facade of the building, and there's a floodlight in front of the entry lobby that we're removing because it's not needed, and it creates a really bright hotspot. So I can show you kind of what it's going to look like right here, so this on the left is the fixture that we're adding, uh, based on our conversations with the, I don't wanna, the Abaka Board, is that how we're saying it? Uh, this is a fixture that we went with that they approved, so we got approval last week from them. And we are placing one fixture on a pier here next to the Wells Fargo sign, and then another fixture here on the, on the pier by the nail and spa sign. We've worked with Robin and John on a couple iterations, just going back and forth with the law, just to lower the light levels as much as possible while meeting compliance. So this is kind of what we've got, but basically for New York, there are two compliance areas that you have to meet. It's two-foot candles at grade in a thirty-foot radius from the interior lobby, and then it's one-foot candles sixty feet out, and at sixty inches of vertical light reading. Are there any questions?
Not on my end. Any members of the board have questions?
No.
Uh, we got an EAF dated today. We got that this afternoon. Has everybody had a chance to take a look at that? John, any issues on your end?
Uh, not at this time. We worked with the applicant, and we're very pleased with the outcome.
Okay, Jim?
Nothing from me.
Alright, I don't think Dan's gonna have any engineering issues with lights.
Yeah, no engineering issues here.
Thank you. Members of the board, any concerns? I know we've seen this before. We'd like to know. Um, John, are we all right to proceed then?
Yes.
Okay, so first, there's a motion to declare lead agency.
Make a motion.
First by Ron San. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Bill. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a neg deck. Um, that is on page one nineteen of the book. We have a motion to approve.
Don't move.
First by Rob.
Second.
Second. Second by Bill. Alls in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And next, on page one twenty-one, we have a resolution approving the mended lighting plan for Wells Fargo Bank located within the Truville Shopping Center. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
First by La Scala. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Biscotti. She got you, Rob. Aye, second. Alls in, alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck with the project.
Thank you very much.
Good night. Thank you for working with Robin and, uh, John. Okay, next on the agenda, we have Net Tucket Sound LLC. This is a decision on the site plan. Location is three eighty-five Pier Street, looking for Joe Rena.
I'm here.
Joe, you're on.
Hi, everyone. Uh, Robin, can I get, share my screen?
Yes.
Okay, um, so the last time we had, um, reviewed a tree mitigation, also a tree mitigation plan, uh, that, uh, Frank Giuliani had put together. Uh, Frank is gonna try to get on the meeting, he's on another meeting tonight, but I don't know if he's gonna make it, but, um, uh, with that said, uh, that, that mitigation plan dealt with, uh, the trail that connects Downing Drive to Balden Road, and the area that we focused on was this area behind these two homes here, up into this area here, and that was, um, this mitigation plan that Frank had put together. Walt and Jane Daniels, um, had some comments on this, and they had some, um, they had a request to look at some additional areas that they, they thought needed more focus than this area. So last week, uh, we walked that, uh, the trail again, and we ended up at the trailhead up by Balden Road, and, uh, came back with a, uh, another plan. So that would be this location here. In this area here, the, these up, these photos don't show the trail, but, uh, this is the right-of-way for the trail, so it's this, it's basically this area here. And, um, what Frank put together was a, uh, a different plan there, where, um, this area is, is wet, there is a water course, will open, little sort of, uh, uh, small ponding area here. It goes under the trail and continues out, um, to the, uh, to the south. And this is highly, uh, infested with invasive species. And what, what, uh, Frank has put together here was, is a plan showing, um, the invasive species removed. And, um, just give me a minute here, because I can't. Okay, um, so this is, this is the trailhead here, um, the Sassfall. Um, there's a little bridge here, and the rest of this is all, uh, raised wooded platform. So what Frank has done here is, uh, removed all the invasive species, and did a combination of, um, shrub, wetland plantings, and trees. Uh, we originally at the, during the sidewalk, just discussed doing this area here from the trail up to the existing, uh, walnut tree that's right here. He went beyond that, uh, went to the other side of the water course here, um, and planted these areas, as well as the other side, which we, um, uh, which, which we were not discussing, so. This is a much larger scale enhancement than what, than what was discussed when we did our sidewalk. Uh, I can't speak much towards the species, but, um, you can get an idea of what he's doing here. He's planting a mixture of shrubs, wetland plantings, you can see cattails he's planting, where you have, um, these low areas here, and you have water ponding. Um, this area here, he's protecting some existing Queen Anne's lace. He's got some, um, how do I say, trees. And I'll get over to the plant list. Um, you can see the trees he's planting, yellow birch, dogwood, uh, the, the, uh, wetland planting and shrub planting he's doing is chokeberry, uh, cattail, joe pie, don't ask me what those are, and northern bluefly. Uh, to remove the invasive species, there was a comment about not using Roundup. Um, he is proposing to use rodeo, which, uh, is uh, a herbicide, but it, it's missing some ingredient which, um, that doesn't make it as toxic as the, um, uh, Roundup, and it's prescribed to be used in wetlands. Uh, and, and essentially, the application is, uh, because the invasive there have an extensive root system, the only way you can get rid of those is cut them down to the ground, and then brush on with an applicator each stem. Uh, you brush, brush on the rodeo. It's not a, um, so it's a systemic application, it's not sprayed. And, uh, and that's the only way that, um, you're gonna be able to get rid of those, uh, invases because of, as I said, they have an extensive root system, and, and, and you've gotta, you've gotta treat them right at the stem. That's it. Any questions?
Joe, I, I gotta, to thank you again, um, and I saw a comment in the chat from Walt Daniels. He says it looks great. You, and, and you're very consistent in this town. Uh, you know, on behalf of the board, and I think they'll probably speak to it too, you always listen to our concerns, and knows of, uh, the other, uh, groups or, you know, review boards, and you always come back with, uh, with a plan that works. I, I think this is great. You know, again, with your landscape architects on this and other projects, you know, you really finish it off nicely.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it, so thank you. Any, uh, members of the board, any comments?
Rich, just a quick comment, uh, echo a little bit about what you said, but I was just looking at the view on Google Maps from Street View, and, you know, the, uh, maybe, maybe not necessarily an unintended benefit, but one of the huge benefits here is it's gonna make that area look so much better. Uh, cleaned up, I mean, if you look at it now, it, it really can use some work, and I really applaud this idea. It's a great idea. Great spot.
Uh, I'm a big fan of the second alternate, the, the new alternate that we did, for the same reason. I think, um, like, I, I, I think, you know, it's at the head of the trail, and it's really gonna, you know, it's really gonna look, uh, look very nice, and it's gonna be a, um, you know, very attractive as you enter the trail from that location.
Any thoughts from the board?
I just wanna compliment Frank. He's, he's very talented. Very talented. Every job he does turns to gold.
Yeah, I agree. He, he's definitely, uh, one in a million.
Go-to man.
Yep. Alright, John, any comments or concerns on your end?
No, we're, we're, uh, right on board with this.
Are we missing anything at this point?
I, I do not think so.
Jim?
No, I think you're ready to go.
Dan?
So we're, we're, sorry.
It's alright.
Joe, uh, you, are you all set with the DP?
No, we can't go to the DP until.
Alright, you need the, uh, resolution.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm, I'm good to go. I'm sure, uh, after, after that, uh, there'll be quite an extensive stormwater system on this project.
Yep.
Sure.
Do you already have one on the plans?
Joe, have you seen the resolution and, uh?
I have, I have not.
Oh.
So, um, hey, well, before we get to that, we agree that this is the location that we're going to do the, uh, mitigation?
I think.
The, the trailhead?
Pretty loud and clear from our end.
Okay.
Again, Walt Daniels has walked every inch of those trails, and he says it looks great, so you don't get a better endorsement than that.
Okay. Um, so do you want to bring the resolution up, or you want to email it to me?
I did email it to you.
Okay. Excuse me. It, um, it looks like it's just the standard conditions, and we just have to, uh, so what, were we saying modified plans? What, what did you have in mind, and go in there, Robin?
Uh, well, we're gonna have to add this plan.
Right. I'm good with the resolution.
Any other thoughts from the board? If not, John, are we, we're okay to proceed? John, you're on mute.
I'm just taking a quick look at the plan here, so.
Frank, nice work. I'm on mute too.
Yeah. I'm not seeing anything, so I think you can go ahead.
Frank, you're still on mute. See you talking.
Would you like me to share the screen, would that help?
You've already gone over everything.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry. Joe did a great job talking about all your, uh, your, uh, project there. He took full credit, by the way. Frank, just so you know, that, uh, the Daniels saw it, they're very happy with it. I think the board will echo it again. Very, you've always come through, um, and we really appreciate you working with the different groups that have made comments in Yorktown. We appreciate all your help.
Well, this is, you know, I've lived in Yorktown for, uh, uh, eighteen, almost twenty years, so, uh, all these areas are pretty important to me. I'm in Yorktown every day.
We appreciate that.
The, the only thing, if I might, the, the only thing I might, uh, suggest adding is, um, at the remainder of the DOT right-of-way, uh, just to be very certain, and so anybody that is out on the site and utilizing these plans, that there's a note that says, note of some sort that claims it, uh, points it out as a protected area, so there's no, uh, incursion into that area, accidental incursion into that area, as we had, uh, the last time.
Yeah, so what are you saying, John? Put a sign or something up here, and?
Well, a, well, a note on these plans.
Right.
That say, you know, that, that the remainder of that DOT area is, you know, protected area, just so it's an extra, extra note that makes sure no one goes in there, because we did have a little incursion from the last project nearby.
Okay.
Um, when do you want this mitigation to be completed?
From, from my perspective, CEO, or, um, if timing doesn't work because of weather, uh, I would suggest that it could then be bonded until, um, the weather is appropriate for the work to be done.
Joe, do you have any idea when they're starting this? Once every, well, you gotta still go through.
I, I suspect it'll go through DP, so that's, you know, that's.
So you, you could be a while.
Yeah, exactly.
Any thoughts from the board?
Just wanted, does Frank have any thoughts as to whether or not there's one time better than another in terms of the, where the, where the plants are in their growth pattern or anything like that, from timing? Well, this is unique in that, before any planting starts, the invasive species have to, uh, be controlled. Right. So I would suggest that as soon, as soon as permits are, um, obtained, where they can start work on the, uh, on Nantucket, is that the phase one, which is the, um, uh, invasive species eradication start. That's gonna take a good season of just eradicating the Japanese knotweed and all the invasive species there. Ideally, if that was able to start this spring, I mean, this, uh, summer and fall, that would mean that this could be planted early spring. Uh, and that would be the ideal situation. I don't know what, how long, uh, permits take to get this approved, but ideally, this should, uh, this is the perfect season in, um, to cut these plants. this is the perfect season in, to cut these plants down, hit it as per the spec with the first eradication. They'll grow back, cut them again, hit them again, and then that site should be ready by spring, for spring planting. So I would say, what Joe was saying, by the time he gets to a C O, this problem would be available and completed.
So, so Frank, you're saying summer and fall is the best time for the eradication?
Yeah, because if they do this in the summer, that Japanese knotweed will send up new, new spikes within a few weeks. And those get cut, re-treated, and usually with the Japanese, the multi-floral rose and the other invasive is one shot and they're gone. But the Japanese knotweed, as I mentioned, needs two applications. So that would be this summer and then late summer or early fall. Otherwise, it would be the second application would be early, early, early spring, because the Japanese knotweed starts coming out in March. And then this would be planted in May. So I see this as a, a spring planting no matter what.
So, so if we, if the D P extend, approval extends to the end of this year and we're not ready to get in the ground until the spring?
Then it would be a, a spring and summer eradication and fall planting, so the, the fall of two, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay.
Does that sound reasonable to everyone? Makes sense from Frank's mouth?
Yeah.
Any issues, John?
No issues with that whatsoever. I do have one other suggestion, is since we spent time on the architecture here, that maybe consider a requirement to show you the final architectural plans that would be submitted to the building department, so that you can make sure that the architectural quality remains of high standards, as you see in the architecturals that are part of the package at present.
Okay. Board all right with that?
No problem.
So basically, a final site plan before you got, before it's signed off, we'll be back and we'll show you the, the final architectural set.
Yeah, well, at, at time of building permit, actually.
Okay, at time of building permit, alright.
But do you have any concerns, objections, questions, comments? If not, do I have a motion to declare lead agency?
Motion.
First by La Scala, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Rob, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. On page one sixty-one, we have a neg deck, do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second by Rob, second by Bill, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And then on page one sixty-two, we have a resol- a resolution approving the site plan, stormwater management plan, entry removal permit for Nantucket Sounds LLC at three five five Kear Street, as amended. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
First by Rob, second by Bill, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Joe, Frank, again, thank you very much for working with everybody and we really appreciate it.
Thank you, guys, good seeing you all again.
Very professional, let's see it, Frank.
Bye-bye.
Take care.
Thanks again, everybody, bye-bye.
Take care. Okay, next, we haven't seen this one in a minute, we have the McDonald's restaurant. Public hearing and amended site plan, locations three, four, eight, one, Compound Road. So, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
First by La Scala.
Second.
Second by Garrigan, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is the applicant here?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do you want to share your screen?
Sure.
You're on.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Why don't you go through everything for us, where you've been, where you are now, any changes?
Will do. I'm just gonna ask, I'm here also with our, similar to Tiago Duarte from Dynamic Engineering, so he's going to share any of the design drawings that we have. Tiago, if you could put up the, oh, Joe, I'm sorry, you're here.
Yes, yeah, let's say, Tiago.
I can see the email too, I'm sorry. So it's Joe Ricadana. And Joe, if you could just show the site plan, that'd be great, while I brief the members of the board. So, good evening, members of Yorktown Planning Board, Keith Brown, Brown Oldman and Leo, five thirty-eight Broad Hall Road, Suite three oh one West, Melville, New York, four one seven four seven. I'm here this evening on behalf of McDonald's Corp. application, you may recall this application, because we were here not too long ago. In connection with an amended site plan approval regarding existing McDonald's restaurant located at thirty-four eighty-one Compound Road in Cortland, New York. As a matter of housekeeping, all mailings and postings have been performed in accordance with the town code, and our office has submitted the required proofs of mailing and posting to the town planning department in accordance with that code. In November of twenty nineteen, this board approved the original site plan submitted for review, and since then, the plans have been updated and as a result, required a parking variance, which was received by the town zoning board of appeals in March of this year. Prior to receiving the, the previous approval, excuse me one second. McDonald's had addressed comment letters and memorandums received from the following town agencies. On June twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen, memorandum from the advisory board of architecture and community appearance. July eleventh, memorandum from fire prevention. July thirtieth, memorandum from abaca. August twentieth, memorandum from planning. August twenty-ninth, memorandum from engineering. September fifth, memorandum from abaca. September tenth, twenty nineteen, memorandum from fire prevention. And October fourth, twenty nineteen, memorandum from planning. Thereafter, on November eighteenth of twenty nineteen, my office came before the planning board for site plan approval, and after the approval for the original site plan was granted in November of twenty nineteen, the owner operator of the restaurant had determined to expand the existing restaurant slightly. And in August of twenty twenty, an amended site plan application was submitted to the town. In August, sorry, in January of twenty twenty-one, a variance application was submitted to the town's zoning board of appeals to permit the proposed forty-eight parking spaces where sixty-two parking spaces are required pursuant to town code three hundred one eighty-two, subsection A five. On February twenty-fifth of this year, a public hearing was held before the town Z B A regarding our parking variance application. And on March twenty-sixth, the town Z B A granted our application for a variance to allow the forty-eight parking stalls, including three ADA compliant stalls where a minimum of sixty-two spaces were required. The decision was filed on April second of this year. And then in May of this year, a copy of the Z B A decision was sent to the town planning department, and as a result, the town planning staff has scheduled the, the present public hearing for the board's final approval of the amended site plan. By way of background, I'm sure you're pretty familiar with the site, but those who are not, the property is located in Yorktown Heights, within the town of Yorktown, and it's bound, the site is bounded by Compound Road on one side, also known as U S Route two oh two, to the north and old Comp- Compound Road to the south, and is currently zoned C four general business. The site has been operating as McDonald's restaurant for over three decades. The use and proximate to the property consists of the Nissan of Yorktown Heights Car Dealership to the west, a golf guestland service station to the east, the Sylvan Glen Nature Preserve across Compound Road to the north, and residential uses to the south opposite old Compound Road. In November of two thousand nineteen, the original site plan was approved by this board. The revised site plan calls for a small eight hundred and eighty-six square foot addition to the building. The revision requires that the drive-thru be slightly relocated to accommodate the building addition, and this change will eliminate seven of the original proposed parking spaces along old Compound Road. In addition, the increase of building scrap footage increases the number of parking spaces slightly. The proposed plan calls for forty-eight spaces, including three eighty-eight stalls where sixty-two are required. The required variance relief for the number of parking spaces was granted by the Z B A, and the decision is dated March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, and filed on April second. But with me tonight, I have Rob Ricadana from Dynamic Engineering. He is our project engineer to answer any questions you may have in regard to the site plan. And that completes our overview of the project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Joe, you want to share a different screen or you want to go through this?
And I-
Go through this.
I'm sorry, I should also add to our receipt of a draft resolution, an amended site plan, M S four stormwater management permit and wetlands permit for the McDonald's, received by the planning staff, and we have no objection.
Okay, Joe, you're on.
As Keith said, we were before you several months ago, and then we were also in front of Z B A a few months ago as well. As you're aware, the addition to the back, to the rear of the site, need to increase the kitchen area within the McDonald's. Therefore, bumping down and pulling down the entire dual drive-through lane at the rear of the site, therefore eliminating the stalls along the southern part of the site as well, as Keith indicated. If you'd like to see a comparison of the previously approved plan versus the current plan, I can, would be welcome to show you that. Other than that, if there's any question, that's, that's the prime-
I think that would be helpful if you could show before I have to. Thank you.
No problem. As you see, the red is the new and the, the new addition there, and the green is the previously approved. As you can tell, the first lane of the previously approved drive-through started about here, and then the second lane is right around here as well, therefore giving us a adequate space along this rear drive-through aisle to, to have those spots. However, based off this building bump out now and the building addition, it's pushing everything to the south now. And for the vehicle circulation to adequately work around the site, we needed this striped out area, therefore knocking these spaces out along the rear here.
Thank you.
Anytime.
So, as you can see, it really doesn't alter the overall site plan dramatically at all. The additional room was really necessary for the, the kitchen and storage of the freezer and some of the other components. That will make the, the restaurant just function a lot more, a lot better for the, the owner operator. So with that, we respectfully request you grant our site plan approval.
Any comments, questions from the board? John, anything on your end?
I would just like to ask about the signage scheme, if you could go through that. I'm anticipating that the signage scheme was changing on the building that we probably talked about. I guess I'm particularly, particularly interested in the freestanding sign and whether it appears you're keeping that as is, and I wonder if it doesn't make sense to dress that up a little bit.
Yeah, overall, we're not changing any of the signage from everything that was previously approved, even going back to twenty nineteen. Everything else, everything's remained the same signage wise.
Okay. Any ability to modify the freestanding sign, so it's a little more attractive than a single pole logo sign?
I don't think we, let me just pull it up from Google, I don't think we changed that at all in that approval process for the last go-around. I, I mean, at, at this point in time, the company doesn't have any intention to change it? Uh, I mean, what were you thinking in terms of the signage?
Uh, well, we have, we have a sign manual and it recommends, again, you know, moving away from single pole signs, for instance, recommends moving towards more monument signs. So I just wanted to see if there was, since you're gonna have a full construction site going there, whether or not you have the ability to modify the sign, I'm not even talking about possibly lowering the height. We, we have done signs that remain at sixteen-foot height, but, you know, moving towards something a little bit more attractive, more in keeping with the recommendations in the sign manual, but, you know, I defer to the planning board on this, it's just something that I noticed in our pictures, wanted to bring it up as a possibility.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at the images right now, and in terms of sprucing it up, we don't mind doing some landscaping around the base of it and, and things of that nature. But, you know, it is grandfathered, just we didn't, we haven't changed it at all, so it does have a C O. So if you want, I could, you know, I could look into that.
Look into what?
Doing some landscaping and some, you know, some-
No, I'm not, I'm not, not talking about lands, not really talking about landscaping, talking about the design of the sign, so.
Yeah, I, I think what John's saying is the whole site's being redone. And now that the site's being done, it's probably the time to bring everything into performance.
Would that change the sign, cause a delay in the, in the, in the progress?
No, you could, you could really just do this as a condition that they come back with, if, if you wanted to.
Because I wouldn't want to see that sign delayed, these guys, these guys have been-
No, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest that at this, at this juncture either, so. That's why I'm bringing it up and deferring to the, to the desire of the board on it. I understand it's not an expected comment, I just happened to notice it as I was going through the pictures, so.
Yeah, and the thing about it is we've been through this twice and it's the first time it's come up, so that's why-
I understa- I, I understand that, Keith, I'm just bringing it up, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't suggest holding up the project at this point, but it could be a condition that you, you handle as you're moving through the, the rest of your process here.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know I could probably even offer to do something, I mean, look, the, the bottom line is the pylon sign is a classic sign, you know, why they're not touching it, because they like it, it's C O'd, but, you know, in terms of to, you know, meet somewhere in the middle, I mean, we could probably offer to do some type of, maybe like, you know, a small base to it, you know?
Okay.
And then do some landscaping around that, if you, if you incline.
We're willing to look at some things to make it a little better and, you know, work after the fact during, you know, the time between now and your completion of the project. That's, that's fine, if, if you guys are willing, we're willing.
Okay, I just don't want to get into, you know, the fact that because it is a, a C O'd sign, we would like to keep it, you know, the way the sign appears, you know, so I don't want to, I'm, I'm not suggesting removing that and putting in a monument sign, I just want to be clear about that.
Okay.
Are you, are you, just a quick question, are you saying that in these other major upgrades and redesigns, in every case, McDonald's has continued with that kind of retro-looking sign?
Yes. Yeah. You know, it's part of the brand, it's been there, you know, three, you know, three decades. They, they really don't like playing with the pylon sign. That being, I don't, I don't mind sprucing it up like you're suggesting, and doing maybe something like a, you know, some type of masonry base to it and then putting some landscaping around that to spruce it up, that's, I think, I, I think I could speak, I mean, I still have to go back and, you know, under advisement from my client, but I think I could, you know, offer that tonight.
Okay.
Well, that is a possible- Well, that is a possible resolution, resolution change. Any questions from the board on that? John, you got anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Jim?
Nothing from me.
Mr. Sossia?
Um, what is, what is the um, the net increase in impervious uh, between the two plans?
Joe, you got that?
Yeah, so the net increase between what the previously approved plan you're saying versus the plan currently stands there?
Well, I guess it would really be from what exists, the difference between what exists there right now and the plan that's before us.
So what is it, we're actually decreasing impervious coverage? What exists currently is about eighty-two percent of the the site is impervious coverage, which is uh, three hu- uh, thirty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty-six square feet. Um, and we are proposing seventy-seven point seven percent of the site, which is thirty-five thousand five hundred ninety-two square feet. Um, so we're getting about a two thousand square foot reduction in impervious coverage here.
And and where are you in the process with the the New York City DEP?
Uh, we're still under review with them. We've been working side by side with them to get this uh, do this one done and approved.
Do you have any, what kind of improvements they're talking about?
Excuse me?
Do you, do you have any idea what they're talking about in terms of uh, stormwater management?
Yeah, there are several, several comments provided by them, uh, from them and we're, we actually have addressed them uh, this past month. Uh, we haven't heard anything back from them uh, since then.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Any other concerns, comments from the board?
None.
This is a public hearing. Do we have anybody from the public who would like to comment or has any questions? If you do, please raise your hand or instant message Robin. We'll give you a minute. Anything, Robin?
No.
Yeah, I think this is our second go around with this.
Yeah, if at all possible, uh, to the earlier point that was made, you know, we would really appreciate getting through site plan approval. Condition on, you know, whatever, um, you know, improvement, you know, beautification to the base of the pylon sign, some language effect would be fine.
Outside of that, any last minute concerns, questions?
No.
All right, do I have a motion then to close the public hearing?
Motion.
First by La Scala, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Rob, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Earing's closed. All right, in front of us, we have, uh, are we good to proceed, John?
Uh, yeah, and and just check with Dan, make sure he's okay moving forward.
Dan?
Yeah, yeah, it's similar to the other one where they'll need the uh, the final resolution from your board to uh, finalize the application process with the DEP. So we'd like to, you know, get a final look at that when it's done, but uh, we're, we're, we're confident that the DEP will do a thorough review.
I don't talk about that. All right, so you're right with us proceeding?
Yes, no, I'm I'm fine advancing the application.
Hey Keith, have you seen the the resolution?
I have.
All right, so you're right with the changes as noted about you guys looking at uh, the uh, the sign and working with John and Robin.
Sure, where would you, where would you hear that, on the end?
Well, that's Robin.
Uh, I would put it as a requirement prior to signature probably, right, John? Just a plan for a detail of the sign?
Yeah.
Something to effect that's um, satisfactory to both uh, planning staff and the applicant.
That's fine as well. And and we can, can, you know, we can work on it, Keith, you know, up until you guys are getting close to certificate of occupancy if it, if it takes, if we need that time, I don't know that we will, but.
All right, I'll, I could send Robin over some sample language.
Okay, so you want us to hold off for tonight until you guys work it out?
No, I'd love to continue, so uh, how do you wanna handle that so we can get it approved tonight?
Jim, any thoughts?
Guess that we, we had the condition that John recommended and had the applicant submit uh, some plans for dressing up the signage.
Keith, you all right with that?
Yeah, just add to the end of it, subject to the satisfaction of the planning staff and applicant.
Right, and remember that, um, yeah, we'll, we'll add this language in and of course, the secretary of the board will be making sure that that language is uh, in keeping with what's been discussed here tonight.
Everybody good?
No objection.
Okay, do I have a motion then to declare lead agency?
Motion.
First by Bill, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Roxanne, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. You and Rob are in a contest. All right, um, on page two forty-three, we have a negative declaration. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
First by La Scala, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Garrigan, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And then on page two forty-five, we have a resolution approving amended site plan. MS four stormwater management permit and wetland permit for McDonald's as um, as noted in the the past few comments. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion. I'll second.
Bill's second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck, guys.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night, Steve.
All the best.
Take care.
You're going.
Thank you. Do I now have a motion to close the regular portion of our meeting and move into the work session, please?
So moved.
Second by Rob, second by La Scala, all's in favor?
Aye.
You're now in the work session. First on the agenda, and I'm sorry, I'm gonna mispronounce his name. Lajki, stormwater permit, this is uh, one zero three nine Underhill Avenue.
Lajki.
Lajki?
Yep.
I told you I would mess that up. Uh, Robin, can I share my screen?
You still can.
Okay. So this is a um, stormwater permit, excavation permit for uh, Bessem Laki. The Lajki family own these three parcels here, the parents live here. The brother lives here and this is the uh, this is the parcel that we're looking at. Um, the proposed plan is to um, renovate the existing house and expand it approximately by a third. Oh, let me just go back to that real quick. So the driveway access is here off of Underhill. It's the last driveway on the left as you're leaving town towards the Taconic is the exit, exit, northbound exit ramp from the Taconic. Um, it crosses over that stream that basically runs the entire uh, length of Underhill for the most part from the from the wetland. You've all seen this pond with the dam and in the stone dam in Frontier and and the driveway coming in there. So the driveway comes up, up this hillside and to the currently developed portion of the lot. So as you, if you noticed in in the um, aerial view, it showed a property line across the back here. Which is this line shown here, I'll bring it in closer. And currently, um, we are before the assessor's office to uh, do a lot line change where um, lands will be deeded over from Bessem's brother and it will increase the size of his lot. And also at the same time, bring it up to uh, the minimum lot area for that area, which is uh, it's R one two hundred is the lot area. So um, that's, that's in before the uh, the assessor. Uh, we have received comments from the assessor on that and the surveyor is is uh, making the adjustments to the map. But it's a straight um, a lot line change, uh, not a subdivision, not a formal subdivision. So the, the property as it exists now, um, this is the outline of the house. This is, these are, this is the main walls of the house here, there's a screen-in porch off this end here. Um, there's like patio and deck off the back. Uh, the shaded area is uh, existing asphalt. Um, there's a freestanding shed over here and as you can see, here's the driveway as discussed where it crosses over the stream. There's a pipe culvert under the stream and it takes you up uh, this area here. The proposal a- as I said, it's to expand the existing house, so um, this is the outline of the existing house here. So we're uh, cutting off part of that existing house, expanding it a little bit over in this end. And then most of the expansion is gonna be towards the front and side where the driveway is. We're gonna be reducing the amount of asphalt, all this area here is currently asphalt, that's all coming out. Um, we're gonna redefine the turnaround area for the asphalt there. And uh, provide some grading around the house currently. Uh, the house kinda sticks up out of the ground, we're looking to soften that a little bit and and do that by by grading this front area here. Uh, we're proposing a rain garden here for the uh, entire roof area of the uh, residence as it will be when it's complete. Uh, we're not proposing to cut any trees down, we're staying within the areas that are currently disturbed on the property. Uh, we are over fifty yards, I think we're uh, just about two hundred yards of excavation and grading. So that kicks us into um, requirement that we need to get an MS four permit from the town board. And um, the town board has already heard this, they've referred it out. And uh, you know, uh, you you'll be reviewing that tonight and we'll be uh, before back as well as the conservation board. That's all I got. Okay, thanks. Any questions or comments from the board? I, it, this looks like a pure engineering issue, Dan, have you get, had the opportunity to review this?
Yeah, I mean, we we looked at it and concluded it exceeded the threshold for being handled administratively. So it's, it's in the process of uh, being, well, being referred to the town board and um, as the approval authority and uh, uh, we're here seeking uh, your input, but um, it's, you know, it's a redevelopment of an existing site. So we'll have to do a, you know, a final review of the stormwater, but uh, you know, at this, at this point, we haven't done a detailed review, but uh, it it appears that uh, we we don't see any issues with this application.
Okay, can I ask you a question? So this came in as a building permit?
Uh, I don't think it's a building permit, did it, Joe?
What's that?
You didn't submit for a building permit, we, we kinda were dealing with this preemptively?
No, I did, we did both, we did both at the, at the same time.
Okay.
All right, just, just for, for process and procedure. Cause I'm, I'm just curious, if this came in as a building permit, Dan, you would get that to review too, if it was just a building permit?
Well, we'd have to, you know, the, the building inspector would have to look at it in terms of the, the amount of disturbance
Right.
ser- associated with it. I mean, obviously, there's building permits that come in for small additions. Um, so normally those wouldn't get referred to us.
Right.
You know, unless there was an issue, if there was wetlands or um, close to what looked like a wetlands, we would uh, take a look, often go out there. Uh, physically look at the property, check the um, the resources such as the um, the state wetlands and also look at the uh, look at the maps for hydro soils. Uh, water courses, you know, do, do that sort of desktop review.
Right.
Make a determination whether it could be handled administratively or or whether it needed to go to the town board.
So when you got this, you determined by the code, so the code directed this to go to the town board for approval?
That's right.
And then the board then refers it back to us?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, and I guess Joe knew about this procedure ahead of time, so he wanted to short-circuit it and get two things running on the same path.
Yeah.
Okay, so there, there's a process and procedure in place where, Dan, if you see something that the board needs to review, you would then send it to us. Or to the board and the board would forward it to us. There's certain trigger points that would set that off.
Co- correct, I mean, you know, one of the, the, the issues that, you know, we, we had been talking about is what um, what things can be handled strictly administratively and what things um, triggered a minimum, you know, referral to the planning board.
Right.
And and tha- and that, I think, was a bit of a gray area as to what, um, you know, what triggered to the planning board's re- you know, not a review, but to, to just run it by the planning board to see if they had any issues.
Right, and clearly like something like this, even though we're seeing it as a courtesy of the town board sent it to us. Clearly, this is all engineering issues for the most part.
Right, if it was under, if it was under the two hundred yard threshold, it would, it would remain uh, an administrative matter. I mean, there is also the um, the, the water course, the, Joe described. Uh, at this point, they're not disturbing it, so um, you know, it really uh, I, I, well, I shouldn't say, Joe, is there anything you're proposing to do in the vicinity of that? Uh, that would fall within the buffer of that water course?
It, n- not at this time, a- and and that's, I, I, that's in, um, the entry to that drive up onto um, um, Underhill can use some improvement. But um, the, you know, the applicant is kinda in a desperate situation where he really needs to get the house going. So um, he's elected at this point to, to take it through this process now and deal with that down the road. We might be back again i- i- if that's the case. Um, but for the time being, there is no disturbance within a hundred feet of that water course being proposed.
And Rich, to go back to, you know, what we were talking about earlier, I guess one of the issues is, um, you know, just informally to, to, to what level of a administrative application um, would go to the planning board or planning department, we hadn't previously um, done that and and I, and I guess I'm sort of coming from a place of not being in the process for twenty years, so um, things are a little diff- different now, so um, you know, if we wanna establish whatever ground rules. You know, we, we talked about whether, um, you know, recently approved subdivisions require a more thorough or or at least a referral to the planning board. Uh, you know, whether that same policy or procedure would apply to something that was approved, you know, thirty years ago. Does the planning board, uh, still want to see somebody doing an addition on the house, um, from an older subdivision? So other than sort of internally, we've been having those discussions and trying to work out procedures to deal with that.
I, I, I think that's an important discussion to have, but I think also internally, uh, Supervisor Slater meets with, uh, now yourself, John, and the building inspector to try to look at these things prior. So i- if something like this were to come up at one of those meetings, I'm sure John, Robin would look at it and say, listen, this is a no brainer. There's no need to come to the board. Or, you know, this is something that was worked hard on and it really should get a second look. Cause they're the ones that are ultimately intimately involved in all this. So I think that procedure has been put in place, right?
Yeah, no, actually we, we met today. So that, 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 uh, I think we're going to continue to do that on a regular basis to address exactly what you're talking about.
Right. And I think Jim.
If John feels that something, uh, deserves a little more scrutiny and needs to go to the planning board, um, we'll, we'll kick it over to you guys to take a look at.
And Jim, if something was to be changed.
Is that how you see it, John? I mean, I think that's pretty much what we want to do.
Yeah, that's pretty much what we'd be talking about. You know, we can talk about what, you know, some things, uh, that are in the code that sets the benchmark. And go from there. Um, but I think, I think it's really just a matter of us uh, knowing what's happening on some of the things that the planning board has done some extensive work on and has some expectations to make sure that it's, you know, going to end up in the manner that they thought it would. I think that's going to turn out to be a pretty easy thing to do once we hit, hit the ground on it.
And it also, it also goes to the board, I think, um, and the board's done it in the past where if you approve a subdivision and there's certain lots that you struggle with and felt, um, it came time to put an actual house on it that it would require, um, a heightened level of scrutiny. That could be memorialized on a plat or, you know, the plat's the best place to put it because that never, it kind of never gets lost because we always, take a look at these plats when people come in for, uh, to build on a lot. So if there, so if there's anything, um, that the board feels very strongly about or just wants to see us, apply a extra level of caution to, uh, notes on the plat can provide you with that mechanism.
And, and I, I think too, you know, I know we'd be cutting it to the scholars double time if we were here as late each night. You know, I'll say this once, I'll say it a thousand times. We all volunteer. We're doing this to try to, you know, help out the best we can. You know, we're not interested in sitting here all night looking at minor things. I would hope, and I, Jim, just to my, to my point, if a change was going to be made in the code, planning board has, does not start that. That all goes through the town board. If the code is going to change, the town board has to start that process. They might refer it to us for questions as it goes through a process, but we wouldn't be the ones that would change those trigger points, as they say, right?
That, that's correct, although you could always communicate to the town board a desire to see a change based upon something you've seen.
Right.
I think in a situation like what you're referring to here, unfortunately, there's no substitute for sharp eyes on the ground. And that is that when the plans first come in, the people who are asked to review it have to know what they're looking for and what is important. And that's where a sense of history is invaluable.
Okay, thank you.
But ju- just to circle back to what I was saying though, you know, that, uh, the town staff and the planning board, when these projects get approved, it may not, may very well not be the same cast of characters reviewing it. And that's why, you know, um, if there's something that the board's really concerned about, notes on the plat are, are the best way to, uh, pass it on to the, uh, the people who'll be reviewing it at some date in the future. I mean, we frequently, frequently see lots many years later, uh, come back for development long after the planning boards looked at them.
I, I would agree with that and I'm sure it happens all the time. And I think you see, you've been at many, many of these meetings, Dan. Now with us, but also on the other side. And I think you see, we generally have concerns when we hear the, the, uh, the residents with concerns. And I think the board here, John, Robin, everybody kind of works devil in the details on those things. And, you know, clearly we've seen projects where residents are really concerned about things. And I think that's where we put that extra look at. But some things, obviously you guys can work at in-house and could get done at that level. And again, Bill, I'm sorry. The check isn't going to be that big next time.
Rich, can I, can I put my two cents in?
Please.
In this discussion?
Always, Joe.
Okay, so I, I think i- i- in light of what, what you're talking about, I, I think there's got to be a, um, a decision made on that ground level a- at the staff level, whether something needs to be elevated beyond their review. So, you know, for example, I, you know, this is the process, but I don't see why this should have to go for a public hearing and we have to go for a public hearing on it. I don't think that that makes any sense. Um, but it, but in certain instances, uh, let's say, there's a wetland permit required or, um, you know, something significant, well, maybe there that could, it gets elevated. In the town in North Castle, they have, um, similar to what we used to have, which was the E panel, they have the RPRC.
Yep.
Which is the residential permit review committee. And they, and at that point, they determine, well, you know, this isn't much different than what was approved on the subdivision pu- plan. You know, we pass some comments or whatever or whatnot. And then they make the decision whether it needs to be elevated or not. So anyway, I can, I can go on and on.
No, I, I.
Throwing that up.
I, I agree with you. And when, when I worked for the town in North Castle as the building inspector, that committee came into place and it was the town engineer, uh, member of the planning board, building inspector, town planner, someone maybe from Abaca or Conservation, and everybody sat and looked at it and made decisions. And I think the supervisor, at least in, in town Supervisor Slater is now having those meetings again. And I think a lot, if everybody's on the same page, could get addressed at those meetings. And I, I share your sentiments. All right, but on to the, the matter at hand. So, John, we'll get a letter to the, uh, to the town board?
Yeah, that's, can I ask just two questions? Joe, Joe, you may have said this before and I apologize if you had, you're, you're, you're reducing the impervious on this?
Yes, we are. Actually, we are reducing the impervious.
Okay. Do, and you, on your plan somewhere is the, the quantity of that or?
Um, it's not, but, you know, we could provide that.
Yeah, I would, I would say.
I, I think, I think it might be in the, uh, in the stormwater calculations. We show that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, so that maybe that'd be good on, on the face of the plans.
Yeah.
And then se- secondly, uh, any tree removals?
No, we're staying within what's currently disturbed.
Right. So other than that one suggestion, Rich, I guess, uh, we'll do a memo, but basically there's no planning objections. Is that correct?
No, I think this is an engineering matter more than anything.
Okay.
Okay. Any issues, Joe?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Thanks, Joe.
And, um,
Okay, we're going to move on next to Nadine's Restaurant. This is a discussion of a special use permit for outdoor seating. We have someone here from the apartment. See anybody?
I don't see.
All right, well, should we put it off or do we want to have a, I guess we should wait till they're, they're, they're here.
My suggest, yeah, put it off, but my suggestion is maybe, uh, this is worthy of a site visit, I think.
I've been there.
You've, you've been there yet. But I mean, uh, you know, when you go there and you're looking at the plan and then looking around in three dimensions, you get a sense of, you know, what's happening there. I think, I think maybe you guys can consider that.
All right, so should we go as a group?
Yeah, if you can.
Rob's buying?
What's that?
So Rob's buying.
Rob's buying, yeah.
All right, so Robin, you want to set up a formal site visit if you could?
Sure.
Sorry, Robin. It's as per John's recommendation.
No, I already said to go there after the farm on Saturday.
Well, I went by, but John's saying he wants us all there as a group.
That's what I meant.
Oh.
There wasn't everyone there anyway, I guess.
All right. So we'll move on to number nine, six fifty Pines Bridge Road. This is a discussion about a subdivision. Location is the same.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Alex.
Good to see you all. The other day.
You too.
Care to listen to Robin?
We're all in trouble. Hey, you're on. All right, so we're back with this other project. Um, and I guess tonight we'll just look at the, uh, tree plant and see what you all think of that. You want to share your screen? Sure. Is that working?
Yep.
All right, so we're proposing, um, to do some invasive removal as well as, um, planting of the trees. So hold on here one sec. So yeah, there were eighty-two trees. Um, there were marked for removal and five were in pretty bad condition, so we're probably going to die on their own soon anyway. And then there was another six that our neighbor was concerned about along the side of the road. That is, um, right along here that he would like removed. And then we're proposing to plant, um, fifty-six trees. And they're all native species. And so again, you know, we're not planning on doing the tree removal and the, um, the building of these houses ourselves. We're just looking to subdivide and then sell the lots so that'll, um, then be back up in the future. So basically we're planning some, so this is basically a hypothetical design. So along the road here, we're planting a mixed, uh, trees and shrubs and then lining the driveway on this lot and then some more trees around the front and back. And same kind of design over here on the other lot. And so these are a mix of deciduous and evergreen trees, various types. And then for the invasive plant, um, we'd already cleared an area in here, um, that was completely inundated with, um, Japanese honeysuckle and porcelain berry. But that's already in the, in, uh, in the building envelope, so that I guess doesn't really count. So this whole area has a huge amount of very large diameter, Japanese honeysuckle. They're basically taking over this whole area. Um, so I'm planning on doing two days of work, taking these all out as well as going through this whole area here and spot clearing a whole number of different invasives in those areas. We did also clear about a hundred small Japanese honeysuckle throughout these areas and just cut them. So they are starting to grow back, so we can go back through and, um, spot treat them with a brush for, uh, with roundup, so to stop the regrowth. But these ones here would all be removed from the roots. So that's basically it. Do you guys have any questions? Look to the board. Any questions, concerns? John?
Uh, I have, I have no questions. Um, I, you know, make note that the tree com- tree commission seemed to send what appears to be a favorable memo on the mitigation. So.
Okay, so what's the next steps here then?
Uh, I think we can, uh, you know, work on the resolution and bring them back next time to see if you can be comfortable with, um, making an approval for them.
Oh, we also, we, we're scheduled on Wednesday to go before the conservation board. And I guess we look at, um, their thoughts on this.
Okay.
Great.
Robin, you have anything that I've missed?
No. I mean, I think we're gonna basically not issue actual permits for this subdivision anyway. We can.
Yes, I mean, these, these are generic designs for the houses. Anybody who might purchase these might want to change any number of things around, so that would be up to them.
Right. So I think when you do the resolution for this, that we should just require the site plans for each lot.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll talk about, uh, maybe you need to do, may, maybe we need to talk about the, uh, invasive removal.
Okay.
Because that's across the two lots. So maybe that needs to be done. And then the planting of trees, planting of trees, uh, on the individual lots maybe goes along with the construction of those lots. We can.
I was plan, I was planning on doing the invasive removal now.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
And I guess that's more concentrated on one lot. And also too, I could, we could contribute towards the, uh, the tree fund if you prefer that instead.
It's up to the board.
I know if John Kinkart was here, he'd want those invasives gone. Uh, what is the thoughts from the board? Anything?
I would go along with the applicant. It feels the best for him.
It sounds like he started already.
Well, then clean out the rest of it.
I agree.
You know.
Agree with that. I know the one neighbor here has suggested too that it's pretty messy in this area. There's a lot of scrubby stuff, so I could clean that up for him and then it would look nicer from, from his property. I think that would be great.
It just, you'd have to wait for the, um, we'll have to do some type of tree permit to do the invasive removal. So just wait for that.
Okay.
That would be the best. This way we have a, you know, umbrella under which that work's being done.
Okay.
And, you know, there'll be some guidance in there as to, you know, give us a heads up that you're doing it and things like that.
Okay.
John, is that because you're considering that as a woodland?
Correct. So removing of the invasives would enhance the protected woodland quality and function.
And so he's got to get a permit to do that because it's affecting the woodland?
Well, it's.
Improve it.
Yeah, it's, well, it'll, it will improve it and it is acceptable mitigation for tree removal.
Okay.
So I'm thinking that in order to do the work so that we have the record of the full mitigation plan, that a permit be issued. I'm really, and right now, Robin, I'm kind of thinking out loud about it. And we'll, we'll noodle through it while we're, you know, going through the resolution and so forth, but that's at the top of my head at present, so. If you understand what I mean, rather than, you know, no record of it and,
Yeah.
you know, I, I did this two years ago and so forth, you know, better to have the record that, uh, you approved it. You knew what the areas were. He went and did it. We closed it out and, and therefore you can move forward in a reasonable, reasonable way.
That makes sense. Okay. Any questions? Alex, you got anything? Any questions? No, I think that's good for now. Thanks very much. All right. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to next. This is, uh, Kichwan Farm Solar Farm. This is discussion of site plan and special use permit. Location seven one six Kichwan Road.
Hi, everyone.
How are you again?
Got Jaleah here. We're back to see each other in little boxes instead of in person.
You're recognizable. We see, we can, we can recognize you.
Yes, uh, all right, let me pull up here and share my screen. All right. Yes, so just to recap, uh, sort of where we stand with the Kichwan Farm Solar Farm. Uh, it is a uh two megawatt AC project. Right now, we're around two point four uh megawatts DC, which is actually one uh point that we wanted to discuss with the board. Um, but just as a refresher, here is the site plan. We did do that site visit on Saturday, so thank you all very much for attending. I hope that gave you a better sense of the site that we're working on and um what this will look like once it's been installed. Um, so I did want to raise uh this question, which was mentioned uh during the site visit, but just to sort of get it in writing here with the board. Um, the property owner, and this was actually a suggestion from Alex, um, did request uh if possible that we install the arrays closer to that manmade uh pond. So at the moment, that uh more closely dashed line is twenty-five feet away from the closest uh southern tip of the pond. Um, Alex has suggested a couple of options to us uh marked by those red Xs of where he is thinking we may be able to uh add a few modules, get a little bit closer to that pond area. So we thought we would show these here to see sort of how the, the board feels about those suggestions. Um, if you feel strongly about either of them or feel strongly against them, uh we would love to hear from you, but um you know, at the moment, in terms of engineering, um we do need to look into these options a little bit more. We would need to do a geotechnical analysis of the soil in that area, just to ensure that it can support the arrays the way the rest of the field can. Um, but this is something that we're looking into uh to make those setbacks a little bit closer, so I would certainly welcome your feedback on that. Um, we did also finalize our landscaping plan, um so I believe we had provided this to some of you during the site visit. Um, I know this is a little bit hard to see, so I'm happy to zoom in afterwards, uh but just to zoom in on a couple of what we're considering sort of priority areas. Um, so on the south here, um we are considering this uh southernmost area by the road to be sort of priority, because we do recognize that once we've taken out um this larger area of trees, uh this area here would be uh looking a little bit emptier as far as we can tell. Um, so we have decided to prioritize plantings there. Um, much of the other plantings that you see here are uh were developed in discussions with Alex, just his feedback on what he wants to see on his own property. Um, and then same thing uh on the northern corner here of the array. Um, we did walk through the Kichwan Preserve, uh which we didn't get a chance to do on Saturday, but um we had one of our uh site surveyors walk around there. He did note that there was the possibility that from this northeast corner, you might be able to see the array, so we decided to be prudent, add some extra screening there, even though there are already trees in this area. Um, this is the view that we're talking about. Um, you could see may, you know, maybe there's a chance that you can sort of see through these trees. Um, this is just that rendering from that northeast corner. Um, and yeah, I'll just uh leave the site plan up um just for discussions. I believe the outstanding items on our end at this point are uh completing a stormwater analysis and submitting the MS four permit uh for that stormwater and for the tree removal. Um, and I do not believe there's anything else we're missing at this point, but please do let me know if I've forgotten something.
Thank you, Julia.
And I thank you very much for the very informative uh site walk this weekend. It was very helpful. Um, Alex, I think you said that the property's been in your family there for over a hundred years. There is uh buildings there from the seventeen hundreds, eighteen hundreds and up. And you know, it's really interesting to see how obviously things have changed over the years. They said for a time you could see all the way to the reservoir. And obviously, over three generations, things have changed. Uh, but really appreciated all the historical insight, and I gotta tell you, just as one board member, this is one of two sidewalks we did this weekend. This just seems like a no-brainer. I mean, it was very well laid out. I, as one, one vote, have no opposition to you moving forward closer to that manmade uh pond structure. I think there's others that would have to look at that though. But I think the presentation was excellent. I think it really fits, you know, the property, and you know, what everybody keeps talking about is at some point, these farms are struggling so much that you might have to go to subdivision, and then you can see homes there that are there forever. This is a twenty-five-year fix, and at which point that could get taken away, maybe you start farming again. Um, but I, I just thought it was very well laid out. I think the landscaping works. And uh, that's just my input. I, I would reach out to the rest of the board members. Any thoughts, questions, concerns?
I have absolutely agree with you. I think it's the best place, best use, and uh it's, it's tucked away and it'll, and it'll help save the area. They, they, they're gonna save all the houses and this doesn't evade on anything. It's perfect, it's a perfect spot for it. I think.
Thank you.
I loved the farm. I thought it was a great environment and um I struggled a little bit with it, but there was a minimal amount of trees that need to be removed. Um, it doesn't interfere with anybody's life for the most part, so I, I think it's a great thing, and again, the farm was, it, it was really a beautiful sight. I loved it. I think this is a good site for this.
Thank you.
Anybody else? John?
Yeah, thank you all. This is a really big decision for us and our family, and we haven't been taken in lightly. Um, but no, we appreciate your feedback and you know, this is gonna help keep the place in the family and do much-needed repairs to the old buildings and just like I said, how it would be removed in twenty-five years and then have the option of looking at different things then. It really um gives a flexibility to uh preserve the place, and so, thanks.
Really, it's like a walk back in history. I mean, just walking around there, seeing some of the old tools, hearing some of the stories, and the fact that you got historic buildings that you maintain all these years. Um, I gotta tell you, it was a very, very nice sidewalk. Um, I, I really enjoyed it. It's, it's, I'll tell you, it went up there as one of my favorites.
Thank you. We really, there's so much history of the place, and you know, we've lost some generations already, but my mom really knows a lot of the old history from my great aunts who lived there their whole lives and died at ninety-five and ninety-four. And one of these days, maybe next year when I have some free time, I think we're gonna work on writing some of this stuff down and talking to the Historical Society.
That's, I think that'll be great. John Tiger, are any issues?
Uh, not really. Uh, the only thing that uh I think we wanna gain good certainty on is the screening. So I hope uh Robin and I can work a little more with Julia on just being certain about, you know, what the measures are, what you can see, if anything, from, you know, the pertinent areas and uh just get some very good uh sense on that. So that's the only thing that I have.
Julia, any questions on your end?
Uh, just wanted to confirm um if we are at the point where we can move this. I presume this has to go to a public informational and then a public hearing. Would that be the next step in front of this board? Aside from, of course, working with uh John on the screening questions.
I think that's correct.
Yeah.
Certainly set it up for a PIH.
And I know we only meet once in July and August. So I'd make sure, you know, I would work with Robin as, as quick as possible to, to get that going.
Great. I will do that.
Okay, great. Alright, any questions on this one? Julia, Alex, members of the board?
I just wanted to let Alex know, uh Alex, I sent you a private message with my number. There's a local historian who may be able to help you with some of that documentation. He's in the uh, in local Historical Society, and he's an author also, so.
Oh, okay. Great, thank you.
No problem.
Alright, guys. Alex, thank you. Have a good night.
Alright, thank you very much.
Take care. Okay, next we'll move on to Arcadia Farm Solar Farm. This is again, it's about a discussion, site plan and special use permit. Location is thirteen hundred Baptist Church Road. And again, this was our, our, another sidewalk we did this weekend. Julie, you're on.
Great, thank you.
Hello?
Uh, alright. Uh, great, and I, yes, for this one in particular, um I also have Mike Tarzan on the line with me um from our uh contractor. He has done the engineering design uh for this one. Um, and he's working with the Crown Energy Group, um who is a great partner for the rooftop project. Um, they have a great relationship with uh Patty over at Arcadia, and they will be doing the installation of the ground mount as well. Uh, so just as a refresher uh for the Arcadia Farm Solar Farm, uh we were talking about an eight hundred kilowatt AC ground mount. I believe we'll take around nine hundred and fifty kilowatts DC. Uh, here is the site plan for the Arcadia Farm. Um, and for those of you who are on site, um you've seen how far up the road uh this is into the farm area, so it really isn't visible uh from roadway or from uh really into neighboring properties, since it is sort of well tucked away on the Arcadia property. Um, I believe the last time we presented to the board, uh we did not have uh a completed tree inventory. We have uh since done that. So here are the results of that tree inventory, um which we will, of course, share with the board. We only got that recently. Um, so just a note, we had a previous layout that we chose to move away from uh that would have involved the removal of a hundred and fifty-five trees. This new layout uh involves the removal of eighty-seven trees. Of those, um twenty-eight unfortunately are already considered non-viable. Um, those are either uh decaying or dead for some reason. Um, the majority of those are ash uh trees that have been blighted, particularly in this year, um in the past year or so. Uh, so unfortunately, twenty-eight of those really are non-viable, um should probably be removed regardless. Uh, and then we have fifty-nine uh trees that otherwise would be viable, that are not invasive, that we would need to remove uh for the installation of the solar array. Um, and just to give you a sense of uh where those are, the majority of them are marked out. Um, the small red numbers, and it's a little bit hard to see, um but they are marked out on this plan. Uh, the only ones that we uh may be able to keep are the ones that are uh due east and west of the array. Uh, that really depends on sort of our final engineering design and a little bit more details of those specific trees. We inventoried them to be safe. They're included in the eighty-seven total. Um, but we may not need to remove all eighty-seven trees. We may be able to get that number down a little bit, so we're still working on that, but we will provide the tree inventory results to you. Um, and we were also able to finalize a landscaping plan. So shown on this plan are uh the trees that we know for certain would remain on site, so those are the sort of larger uh circles there. Um, and then you can see those smaller areas. I know it's a little bit tough uh on this size plan. Um, but those smaller areas, uh or those smaller circles rather, are the uh trees and shrubs that will be planted around the uh southern and western side and northern side of the array. And then also uh down on the south there, near the road uh on the entrance to the property, you can see a small area that we planned to be planting a pear and apple orchard. Um, that was at Patty's request specifically, she wanted to have a little orchard in that area, so that is what we will be doing as part of our landscaping plan. Uh, and again, I'll leave the uh site plan up in case the board has any comments or questions. I'm happy to get into any of those other details. Um, again, we are working on a stormwater analysis here, and we do know we need to submit that MS four permit. Let me know if I've missed anything.
A- and again, uh Julia, thank you. Uh, and another great site visit. Really gives you a hands-on to listen to some of the struggles and you know, I, I know the owner said this is gonna save the farm. Um, and again, it's in an area, no one's really gonna see it. It's not gonna bother anybody. It just seems like the perfect fit. Uh, again, we got a little history of the uh, this farm, a little bit different than the last one. But we won't get into those details. But again, I think this is just really, you know, this is what you wanna say, at least my opinion. You're going into an open area, preserving the farm, keeping everything intact, and it's in an area that's gonna go, you know, pretty much unused. So again, board members, any comments, questions, concerns?
Same remarks we did last time. I mean, this is a great, great spot for it. And it helps the farm, saves the farm.
I think that's so key.
Very important.
Roxanne, Rob?
I agree. I think that, again, the site is a good site for this type of of installation of a solar system. Um, it works for me. And it saves the farm.
Yep.
I think the best part is it still is a farm.
And it's still a farm.
Well, again, very nice tour. It's just, it seems so appropriate for what they're doing. John, any comments, concerns? Where do we go next?
I think you, yeah, sorry about that. I think you can uh set it up for a hearing, the first hearing.
Okay.
Uh, and we'll be looking at the same thing. We'll just double-check and be very certain about what you can see from where, so.
Of course.
Okay. And so again, Julia, just work with uh Robin and John and get that moving.
Great, thank you.
Right, any questions on your end?
No, yes.
Good. Okay. Next, we have another, a large-scale solar panel power generation system. This is at the Shrubout Plaza. This is a discussion of the special use for it. Locations one four, two sixth East Main Street. You wanna share your screen again, Julia?
Yes, I will. Uh, there we go. Um, I did want to quickly make a note, I believe there was a typo on the agenda um in the system size. Um, this is not a two-megawatt system. Uh, it's two hundred and thirty-three kilowatts AC. It's about two hundred and fifty kilowatts DC. Um, just wanted to clarify that. Don't wanna cause confusion about the system size. Um, so yes, we uh had presented uh this uh large-scale solar system at the Shrubout Plaza um to this board previously. Um, we have sent one uh some work to address comments that we received at those meetings. We also had a private session with Robin and John uh to review their comments, um so I will try my best to address all of those. Um, we also did submit a letter with our application materials, which I hope addressed many of those uh concerns that the board raised. Um, so again, as a reminder, uh this is the site plan that we're looking at for the system. It is split uh on four canopies and the rooftop system. Um, the system size is slightly larger for the uh canopies than the roof, um but in total, as I mentioned, it's two hundred and thirty-three kilowatts AC. Um, one of the uh comments that we did receive was questions about the location of the foundations, um and whether those would be going into the uh parking lot areas, so the impervious surface, or whether those would be going into the grassy areas. Uh, so uh the majority of those, uh so for canopies that you see there, one, two, and three, uh those will all be within the impervious uh parking lot areas. We will not be drilling into the grassy areas. Um, for canopy four, those foundation posts will be in the grassy area rather than uh on parking lot spaces. Uh, and that was done primarily to ensure that we could maintain those parking lot spaces. Um, it can be difficult to get the canopy posts to line up properly with the parking lot striping. Um, so in that particular arrangement, it just makes more sense to maintain the parking lot spaces and put the foundations in that sort of grassy area. Um, however, the total disturbance is relatively minimal. Um, in the grassy areas, we're talking about about two hundred square feet, uh so not a significant amount of digging in those areas. Um, the second comment that we received was about uh the proximity to uh New Road on that side of the property. Um, so I will note uh on canopy one, those are the foundations and posts that are closest to the property line. Uh, and the closest one is approximately three feet from the property line. Um, so in that particular case, we would uh require setback variance. We are aware that that is within the setback area. I did wanna point that out um as something that may be worth discussing with the board. Uh, oh, sorry, before I move on, one other comment that was raised uh was there is a light post that is uh at the moment located where canopy two is. Um, that light post, as well as any other lighting that currently exists in the parking lot, would remain on site. Those posts are shorter than the canopy heights, um so they will fit beneath the canopies. They will still illuminate the parking lot the way they always have, uh so we will not be removing or needing to replace any of that lighting. Uh, also wanted to provide an elevation drawing just for your reference of the heights. Um, so canopies one, two, and three all have the same uh basic shape. Um, you can see the clearances are uh about fourteen feet uh on either side. Um, so these are what those three canopies will look like. Uh, and then canopy four looks a bit different. Um, it does have that uh cantilever, so on the high end, uh canopy four is about seventeen feet. Uh, and then you have that thirteen and a half foot clearance on the low end. Uh, and that's fairly standard uh for vehicle passage, especially for emergency vehicles, to be able to pass underneath them. Uh, it was also requested to show an elevation of the rooftop system. Um, so there are fairly tall parapet walls around this entire building, um so you can see in that bottom right, uh the modules themselves are those small uh sort of blackish lines that are showing up on top of the roof there. They're going to be about ten to twelve inches at most off the roof. The parapet walls in the lowest area of parapet walls are about three feet tall. I believe some of them are as tall as six feet. But the lowest parapets are three feet tall, so those will be blocking the modules. You will not be able to see those rooftop modules from ground level. We also put together a landscaping plan. It involves planting, I believe it's seven trees total, just to screen in some very particular areas. We are not doing too much tree removal on this site. But for the areas that we do feel that there is more screening needed, for example, along East Main Street, as well as along New Road, we are adding some trees there. I did wanna make a note, we did receive a letter just earlier today from the Tree Advisory Commission regarding the Japanese lilac, noting that those are considered invasives. So we will take that recommendation and replace that in our planting plan with either dogwood or service berry trees. We're speaking to our landscape architect, so we will get that fixed, so that we don't plant any invasives with this plan. And then I did wanna share a few renderings, just to give you a sense of what this might look like. So this is sort of from a bird's eye view. And then looking from the road, if you were to drive up East Main Street, this would be the view. You can sort of make out, this is the top of one of the canopies back here. Again, as you're driving past on New Road, you would be able to make out these structures, definitely, but they are still somewhat screened by the trees along the road there. Same thing, this is behind canopies one and two. And then finally, this is just an overview of that canopy four, to address one of the other questions that was raised, was about the grassy area beneath canopy four. So we did do a quick shading analysis, so the, this rendering that I'm showing here is the approximate shading. In July at three P M, you can see that that area beneath the canopy is fairly well shaded. It is fairly well shaded for most of the year at many hours, except for very early morning. Given that, we will do our best to plant shade tolerant plants and to do what we can to continue to support the vegetative growth under there. But I did wanna make the note that there will be some significant shading underneath canopy four. Finally, yes, wanted to provide an update on the tree inventory. So we originally inventoried twenty trees. However, we've since identified that ten of those can actually remain on site. So only ten trees will need to be removed of those who are considered invasive, six are not. So that would be the minimal tree removal that we need to do on this site. And again, as last time, I will leave the site plan up here, just for your reference, for any discussion. Do let me know if there are any points that you had as concerns that I have not addressed. I'm happy to try to address those now. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. And I, I think when I first saw this site plan, I was extremely concerned. And very much thinking that it was gonna change the character of Shrubok. Because this is, there's nothing like this in that area. Most of the area is very historic. Especially some of the structures right next to this. I think, just as one member, I think you've made changes for the location of these to help. I still think it's, it's very tall, has a very commercial look to it. This is unlike the other two sites you just presented, where this is something everyone's gonna see. And it is gonna impact the area and the visuals of the area. You know, we know this is fast coming. We're starting to see these all over the place. What I think here, though, is I don't think enough has been done in the landscape venue to try to to screen these. And now even with the variance, I think that just makes it more, you know, again, not, not in favor of the project, but I think more needs to be done to screen the area. Alright, that's just my opinion. I look to the board. Any concerns, questions? It's a little bit different application.
I think the more you screen that strip mall from East Main Street, you're screening the businesses there. And they want to be noticed. So the more we screen in, and I agree with the chairman that this application changes the whole climate of that area. The renderings helped me a bit, seeing it from ground view. It doesn't look as, as bad as it does from sky view. So that did help me a little bit, but when I think about the businesses there, being screened in with the trees, just so we don't see the solar system, you're taking away from their natural advertising as you drive by. So that, that's a concern to me as a business person.
I, I totally agree. I think those businesses will be adversely affected. And no matter how you screen, you're gonna screen everything. So I'm, I, I don't know. I hate to say it. I'm totally against this project. But if it was only on the roof, I'm on a hundred percent for it. But when you put that visual pollution all over the place, it just don't go with me. It's not the, like the other things where they were hidden. The other two projects were just hidden. Nobody could see them. But here, you're adversely affecting those people who pay good rent for, for the, for their location. I just don't, just don't like screening everybody off.
I think also with, you know, I think we've seen certain applications come in front of us. I think about the, oh my God, the Trader Joe's that we saw some time ago. And their whole sales pitch was, they wanted the back of the store to face Route two oh two, right? So I know we were, before we knew it was Trader Joe's, we were all very concerned about the looks of that. And again, we worked with the applicant. And when, when I say screening, I think it's more of a landscape area. Because I think there's things you could do to bring down the massing, bring down the look without screening the businesses. And I agree. Although everybody in the world knows where Noventerto and J V Bagels are. But I think it could be done in a way, I believe, if the right landscape person or architecture is put in place, that it's a win-win. I agree. I think it's gonna change the whole look of the area. I think it's very industrial looking. I, you know, I understand this is the way everything's moving. But I, I think, and, and I would look to John Tegger and Robin, if there's a way to possibly do this a little bit more tastefully. Because this is very, I agree with, with Bill. This is very different than the last two applications.
But, but Rich, I guess, just to remember, when, when this first came before,
I remember.
The solar panels were all along East Main Street. And in fact, they only went up to a certain point for that very reason, that they didn't want to interrupt the visual flow, if you will, from the street to the stores. And so what they've done is they've moved them off the street, which I think so, and maintaining, I presuming that many of the trees that they thought had to go can now remain on East Main Street, right? So they provide a little bit of visual interruption, if not screening. Julie, I'm curious, are, are these structures anywhere nearby that we could see them, stand under them, and see just how big or massive they are or not?
Sure. Yeah, so we have, I, I will caveat this by saying it is a different type of system. So the racking that we are using for this site is actually fairly minimal in the sense that the posts are relatively small. The racking itself, the, the frames, the steel is not particularly large. We do have another site in Austin, at the Mariner Fathers and Brothers. We're doing two of their parking lots with canopy structures. Right in front of their quite large historical building, which I think actually gives an interesting contrast, similar to what many of the board members are getting at here with those new structures. The ones over at Mariner Fathers and Brothers, which are, is being built right now, those are actively being installed. Those are larger canopy structures, in the sense that they have more steel, they're more invasive to the space. But that is our only project that is sort of nearby that could be used for comparison.
I, I do know that these types of structures are at the Manhattanville College in the parking lot. And that's a quick drive-through. They have them there. And I, I think these things are fast coming. I, but I, I do think there could be a balance. You know, I, I agree with Bill in, in some respects that this is gonna, you know, change the whole character of the area possibly. And I also, listen, as Roxanne is a business person, you know, I'm sensitive to also screening, so no one could see the business, because you want them to thrive. You want them to do well, especially in that area. But I, I think there's a way to balance it. I really do. I've seen it before. I've seen architects bring down massing with, you know, brings your eye to something else. You know, so you're not looking. I think there's a way to do it. I just think, Julie, you got the, you know, and I, I don't know who your, your, your team is, but I think if you talk to them and work with them, I'm sure between them and John and Robin, there's, there's some side, there's gotta be some type of balance there.
You know, I, I, I got a thought. My, my building was run into a couple of times over the last years with cars. They, they run over the curbs and they hit the post office and so on. Now, these people are gonna park under these, under these structures. They're on pylons. How many times do you think someone is gonna hit that pylon and move, move everything? I, I, I mean, it's just a thought. If you could run into a building, you could certainly run into a small pylon.
That's, yes, that's certainly a valid concern. You know, I will say, not as often as one might think, at least in the other systems that we have. With the way that these are designed, of course, they're designed to be in parking lots. With the way the foundation is built, that is certainly something that's considered. Any of the foundations that have wiring or electrical components running down them or on the side would be more protected, whether that be with the addition of a bollard or some sort of extra encasing around the base. But of course, we don't wanna be taking up parking spaces. So whatever we do will be limited to as much as we can to just around those foundation posts. Either an extra encasing or, or something to that effect, to avoid having to add bollards and avoid taking away parking spaces. But certainly, that is considered in the engineering. Certainly goes into those calculations.
Good point, Bill. Anybody else from the board? Any concerns, comments?
The other thing I'm thinking about is that you don't have as many, you know, years in the ground as the buildings do. Your, your extrapolation of hits is probably nil. That's, they're so new, nobody's been really able to park under them for years and years. A lot to see five years from now. How many of these things survive?
Well, the, our oldest system that uses canopies is five and a half years old. And of the systems that we have that use parking lot canopies, we have only had one instance of a collision with one. So we do have over five years on one of our systems and, you know, four years on another. So yeah, we've only had one collision in that history.
Anyone else? John, what are the next steps here?
Given some of the comments, I think it would be a good idea if we go out and take a look at the site. You know, try to work on some of the things that you talked about. I, I don't think, I don't think there's a lot of screening right now proposed for the frontage. I think it's mostly around the other side. But we'll, we'll verify that and work to see if we can do a better job on it. And then I, I think also that you can go forward. I think it's, there's enough here to, to roll it out to the public for the first time, so.
Sounds like a plan. So Julia, it sounds like you can have three public informational hearings. We'll go from there. Did I miss anything?
No, I, I was wondering whether or not it might not be, it might be a good idea to give the applicant some feedback on which of the seven, of the nine structures the board finds most objectionable. I'm guessing it would be one, two, and three, but I think if, I'm quite, I'm dubious that these can be actually either screened or effectively mitigated. And if one, two, and three are just not in the cards, maybe it'd be best to tell the applicant now.
Well, I think they did cut them back. Obviously, the two you're gonna see the most are, are two and three, I would agree. You know, four, no one's gonna see in the back. And the neighbor, the old tire place, I don't know if anybody's seen that recently. That could really use some help. I, I don't think it's that view shed that's gonna matter, because that Mountain Brook Road that is shown there, you know, that, that's not where the problem is. It's, I think it's gonna be two and three. But again, I, I, I don't wanna say they have to go. I just think there's, there's ways to bring people's eye to something else. And I think through correct architecture, I think that could, that could work. And I, I think if I'm not mistaken, Julia, it was, it becomes cost prohibitive at some point. It's not worth doing the work if you don't get a certain amount.
I think we should have a site visit.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Look at it.
Yeah, we'll go to Nadine's at this same time. Robin's getting, I can see Robin, very excited about the site visit.
Noventoto, Nadine's, is that the plan?
Listen, I, I love Noventoto. That's our Friday night stop. Alright, so we could set that up?
Sure.
John, bring some balloons.
Yes.
Julia, any issues? Any questions?
No, I mean, I do appreciate that we can at least start to get this in front of the public, because I think that will be some important feedback for us also. And yeah, we'll work with you to set up that visit, and we can certainly talk more about the landscaping, if there's something else that we can do that would make these more acceptable. You know, happy to discuss that, but I think that's all for today.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentations. Any members of the board, any further comments or questions? Okay, with that, that is the end of our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn, or to close the meeting?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Good night, all.